Committee of the whole, Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Colvin.
Here.
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 Mr. Dawson and Dabson, Mr. Hamlin.
Here.
All right, Mr. Long, please leave the pledge. The pledge is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, board, I need a motion in a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Ms. Blatner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey.
Yes.
Ms. Colvin.
Yes.
Mr. Robles.
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin.
Yes. All right, our first topic is the five-year forecast. Dr. Schuler, you want to introduce the topic? And we'll get rolling.
Yeah, happy to. So the board's finance committee actually at their last, me actually, I think over two finance committees, committee meetings, kind of prepared for this. So I think two meetings ago, just looked through the last set of financial projections, some of the major data elements. And then at our last meeting, looked, I guess, a little deeper behind the curtain, I guess I would say, than kind of what you're going to see tonight in the aggregate projections for discussion. So that's not to keep those data points, I think, from the full board or happy to peel back the layers. But as Dr. O'Keefe and finance committee go through this, so the set of five-year projections really intended to be a launch point for budget development. Recognize that your tentative budget won't come to you until July is generally when you see the tentative budget. So there is still a good five months in budget development. And some of the data elements are going to naturally shift between now and when that budget happens. But this is intended to be a launch point for the conversation. So there are some data pieces that are known that will factor into the five-year projections. And then there are some pieces that we have to project based on what we anticipate might happen in the next month, two months, three months, you know, years that sit beyond. So it's really some of that level of assumption that the finance committee spent a little bit more time with just kind of understanding the inputs and then kind of where we're going to get tonight. So Dr. O'Keefe probably did a very good job of like setting all of that up. But I'm going to kick it over to you to go ahead and take the board through kind of where we sit and what you've prepared for them.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. You did a great job. Really, we'll dig into the data that you have and walk through some of the major assumptions. But the five-year projections are to give you an idea based on what is known. There's a lot of known at this time, but there's also a lot of unknown. So it allows you to see where we potentially will be with the caveat of, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, we're six months away from putting a tentative budget in front of you. There's a lot that will happen between now and then, but I think it's a good start, certainly from the staffing and building of a tentative budget. Start for us to get a sense of where potentially we might have some challenges in the short term and long term. So there's three pieces of data that you have inside of your green folder. You've got what you see up on the screen here. So a look at the operating side of things. The specific piece of paper in front of you that is orange, that is based on your annual financial report for fiscal year 23. So the fund balances inside of this come from your AFR. You have a second piece of paper that looks exactly the same. That has a yellow highlight at the top. Those are your fund balances on a cash basis with all the assumptions being the same. And then you have a third piece, which is really where I'm going to spend the majority of my time talking through. It looks at the major assumptions and/or knowns that we have inside of this forecast with an update even from something that I attended this afternoon. So we're not going to look yet at what the final documents look like as it relates to the assumptions based on your fund balances coming from the AFR and your fund balances coming from the cash basis side of things. Again, the assumptions are the same for both. But since we operate on a daily basis from a cash basis perspective, and those are the specific financial documents you see on a monthly basis, in addition to your AFR having different fund balances because those are based on accrual, the accrual method of accounting, meaning anything that happens in July and August that is specifically related to the prior fiscal year, it's pulled back both revenue expenditure, which is why your cash balance as of June 30th never matches your cash balances as of June 30th on the accrual side. So major assumptions that are important to talk through before we dig into what the actual outstanding projections look like. So that's this two-sided sheet with our logo at the top. And I've broken it down into four major areas. We'll talk about the levers, what you're in control of, and really what's outside of your control. So the first grouping is the levy assumptions. So that is built into the overall projections. And there's really three major pieces, but then two subsets within the overall levy that we look at. So first line item, the existing change in your EAV. So what we think EAV is going to change on yearly, year-over-year increases as determined by the township assessors offices, not something that's controlled by you, controlled by the district, or even controlled by the county. That is all based from the township assessors. We've got that growth at two and a half percent per year, which is about where we're at historically. That does not change your tax bill or the tax levy at all. All that does is factor into what the actual extending, limiting or tax rate is after everything is calculated. It's a projection on growth of where we think property is going. But again, it doesn't impact an actual tax bill. Secondly, is new construction that you do have control over, that we do have control over, meaning what we are determining or assuming new construction is going to be year after year, because new construction equals new dollars to you times the limiting rate or tax rate. We've got 35 million in for the upcoming levy of 2024. That's based on still a lot of data coming out of Napier Commons that has not been captured yet, because again, these values are as of January 1st that get added into the levy at the end of the year. Got 30 million after that, and then 25 million after that for the last three years of the five-year projections. 25 million is about where we're at on average over a 10-year period. But that, again, that doesn't take into account at this point, anything that may be happening around the downtown area with apartment complexes, because we don't have known data for that yet to at least get a reasonable assumption. Yes, sir.
You're saying we have some control over that, but it's really dependent on what development actually happens.
Correct. We have control over what we are determining we think it's going to be. Because again, every dollar that we don't capture on the new side, we lose forever in perpetuity times CPI. So the control is what is a reasonable estimation from our perspective. But you're correct, John. It's we don't control what the value is. We control what we're estimating to make sure we don't lose any value.
How does that work? If we estimate $30 million and it turns out to be something different from that, is it adjusted accordingly?
Yep. So those new values come from the clerk's office. They would adjust our final tax levy based on what the final dollar amount is. Anything less means that what we estimated we would collect, we're not going to collect. Anything more, we lose in perpetuity. Yep, you're welcome. And then the final piece, which is the biggest lever that you have some control over from an end result perspective, in terms of, and I'll explain why, that's CPI. So that's Consumer Price Index. The CPI announced for December was 3.4%. So your tax levy for 2024, the majority, the maximum that you can ask for is 3.4% over what the final operating levy is for 2023, which we find out in May. Where you have control is you have the ability to go below what that CPI is. So you are not required by law to take all of what CPI is or the cap of 5% as we've seen the last couple of years, but you cannot ask for more than 3.4% on the operating side outside of new construction. So there, again, same thing. There's a bit of control. You don't control what the output is, but you do have some control over what it is that you extend and ask for from the treasurer's office. Two other quick little things in there too that get built into the projections. So certainly what our collection rate is by June 30th is an important number from a budgetary perspective, because it does split it between two fiscal years. And then secondarily, what the tax collection rate is, meaning what we physically collect, what we're authorized to collect compared to what we've asked for and we're authorized to get. So that is typically not 100%. In any school district, in any county throughout this state, our collection rate is about 99.8% on average. We've been at 99.74, 99.78, 99.82, 99.84. So we just look at 99.8. One note that is something underneath your control that we've done for the past couple of years. So the recapture clause that has come in, that's about $400,000 per year. Those are refunds that have happened after the tax bills have gone out. That, so those recapture tax bills, those recaptured dollars specifically, that again, have come in around $400,000 the last two years. That does get included. It's outside of the operating side of things. So there is no minimum or maximum to it. It's what is put forth by the treasurer's office specifically and declared by the clerk's office. Those are dollars, again, if you recall, we put all in the capital projects. We don't put those dollars back into the operating side of things. Since those are refunds that happened after the bills have gone out, this group a few years ago determined the best place to put that would be towards future capital use. So it doesn't get commingled with any operating dollars. Those are really the five big things with the first three being the major parts of it. But again, the biggest thing that drives your lever as it relates to the largest increase, if there is an increase in overall revenues year-over-year, is CPI times your previous tax year. That's the big piece out of that. Few other, any questions on that before I move to revenue? So on the revenue side, there's a couple of big things outside of the tax levy. And I've illustrated those with forward in front of you, excuse me, with some specifics as to what we've planned and put into the five-year projections here. CPPRT, that's the corporate personal property replacement tax. Again, that's a taxed, that is a tax that is collected for all new municipalities by the Illinois Department of Revenue. That is based on profitability from prior tax years. So the tax year that just finished is fiscal year 21, because there is a delay in how those final calculations are done. So we, the Illinois Department of Revenue gives us a projection on an annual basis. This year, we have it at $6 million. That projection of property taxes coming forth to you is we're looking at a reduction in overall revenue moving forward in calendar year 22, calendar year 23. So I've deduced or deducted $1 million in the next fiscal year, $1 million in the following fiscal year, and left it flat in the last three years. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, prior to a couple of years of a significant increase, we were looking at about $3 million per year. We jumped to $6 million per year. Excuse me, we jumped to more, almost $5 million per year in fiscal '22. $6 million, no, off, $5 million, excuse me, $6 million a year in fiscal '22, $7 million in fiscal '23. We've backed off because there's some challenges related to fiscal year '24. The state has had to claw back $885 million worth of CPPRT that was dispersed to all municipalities and districts throughout the state, because the final fiscal year 21, excuse me, calendar year 21 taxes were wrong. So what the Illinois Department of Revenue estimated was $885 million more than what the final taxes were for calendar year 21 throughout the state on a corporate perspective. So that's being clawed back this year. So we're down to $6 million this year. We think there are going to be more reductions in overall tax collections in the future years. So we're moving that back closer to where we used to be prior to this bump. Interest income, we've already heard from the feds that they're going to look at three reductions in the overnight rate that is paid by one bank to another for borrowing money. Right now, that range is five and a quarter to five and a half. The feds are projecting by the end of this calendar year, they're going to be between four and a half and four and three quarters. We are roughly right now, as of two days ago, earning an interest rate of about 5.4% almost in line with where we're at in terms of the overnight rate. So that would certainly reduce where we're at. You see a 10% reduction for fiscal year '25. That's actually based off of where we think we're going to end in fiscal year '24. Your budget for fiscal year '24 is $1.7 million. We are already on pace to exceed that. We are probably going to end up around the $2 million mark. So 10% from the $2 million mark gets us closer into, in line to where we think is going to happen with those overnight reductions at three different times throughout the calendar year. And then the feds are predicting that by the end of '26, they're going to be back into that two to two and a half range. So I've taken 10% down next year, 20% down the year after, and then left it flat as we get closer to understand. as we get closer to understanding what the feds are going to do. That doesn't get us to that two and a, two and a half percent further out. But I, I would like to, to see what happens first before we start trying to make assumptions about fiscal year 27, 28 and 29. But I think this is pretty good for the next two years in terms of interest income. It's not a great majority of your overall revenue, but it is impactful. Just a few fiscal years ago, your revenue on this side for interest income for the whole budget year was $75,000. We're going to be somewhere near $2 million this year. And then some of that will certainly come back as interest rates are reduced as we progress. And the feds think they've got better control of inflation. EBF, EBF, again, we're tier three, we're at a 97.3 adequacy rate. So full adequacy, full funding from the state's perspective within the EBF model is 100%. Things will change because CPPRT is one of those 27 levers, 27 functions or numbers that are inside of EBF. And as EBF, as CPPRT comes down, that very well could bring our overall adequacy number down. But when you add in what we think is going to be some additional funding from the state for next year and the year after, that will probably get us back closer to 100% again. We're on a five year path. So five years ago, we were at 92, 92%. Five fiscal years ago, 92%. This fiscal year, we're at 97.3. So as the, as the, as long as there's no significant change in some of the major levers within the EBF model, we are probably going to, not substantially, we are probably grow closer to 100%. And what that means when we get to 100% is you're held harmless in essence. You're not getting the exact same dollar amount year over year, but your increases are literally pennies. So that's why you see $150,000 projected for next year, $25,000 on top of that for the year after. We're going to be getting closer to 100%, but we'll see as time goes. But again, the increases aren't the important part, it's that we're being held harmless with, with what is coming from the state on the EBF side, because this year that's about 14 million. State MCATs, mandated categoricals, transportation reimbursement, special ed reimbursement, private facility reimbursement. Those are all unknowns at this point, so we've kept them flat to make sure that we are not estimating revenues that we may not get. Part of the challenge with that each year though, two, I should say not though, is specifically our, our expenditures change on a yearly basis and then we submit those to ISB. And the question is, what is their allocation of reimbursement? For instance, this year on the special ed, transportation and regular transportation side, they're paying us not quite 85 cents on the dollar of what you spent in the prior fiscal year. So we are never fully funded on MCATs during my 15 years of experience. So just knowing that our costs are increasing and if they hold what those percentages are, probably fair, there might be a little bit of movement on our end, but I'd rather leave it flat today until we have a better understanding as we get into the tentative and certainly the final budget as a whole. And then last is federal grants, and we know exactly what's happening with that, sir. That runs out this year, $3.3 million of revenue in your budget. We're holding it flat for any of those other federal grants, title one, title two, title three, title four, moving forward. Because those are all based on demographics and then get moot slotted into the whole tiering side of things too. Because they look at it from a state and a, and a US perspective. So I would rather today have us flat on our reimbursements from the state than reimbursements from the feds, than assume any types of increases overall. Questions on the revenue side of things? Spent, expenditures are fairly easy, although there is some openness to the conversation yet at this point, I'll get into it. We know where the WWEA is at, that's 6% next year, 6% the year after. Based on what we think or where we think CPI is going to be in year four, which is fiscal year 27, you've got a floor and a ceiling built into those increases year over year. The floor is three and a half, the ceiling is four and a half. We've got CPI below the floor of three and a half, which is why we've got the floor of three and a half just from a projection perspective at this point. And we've built in 3%, which is closer to where we were prior to this contract moving forward in the future. Doesn't mean that's where we're going to be, but at least from a projection perspective to give you a sense of where things are at. The CEA is right below there. Inside of the financial model, the way that the model is broken down right now, because it's based on what's in infinite vision, all of our certified staff from a teaching perspective, all of our teaching assistants are all in the same accounts. So we know that there's going to be a reduction in salaries here related to CEA, because we've got them at the same levels as we have specifically the WWEA. The increase for CEA next year is 5%. There's about $17 million worth of CEA payroll that's built into the budget for this year. So if in fact, 17 million is the right number and we look at that growth for next year, even though we've got 6% in the model for right now, just based on how it's tied together in the financial system, we'll end up breaking that out in future five year projections that we give you. So we're probably over, we're overstating this to attune in next year of about $170,000. So it's nothing significant from the model's perspective. But until we break it out in the financial system, we kept it together in the, in the overall projection model. And then you see anything else is non-CEA, so non-union based contracts or admin. We're just looking at two and a half over five years. And don't know where it's going to be, but I think it's a reasonable assumption to build into this five year model as a whole. Few other major pieces that we have, really minor in some cases, lane changers or micro credentials. We've got to add that into the projections. We've got 250,000 a year for that. Retirement resignation reduction. So we've got people that are retiring. We have people that will resign without significant major bumps in retirement. We average about a million dollars a year and that net year over year of those that are leaving, those we're hiring and the difference between those two dollar amounts. So we've got that in for five years and that's the major piece on the salary side. And then a couple of other bigger areas, if you will, medical, dental. You not across the board, but mostly pay 80, 20, you, you mostly pay for 80% of any new increases. I was just at the preliminary renewal for NIHIP today, our specific projection at this point. And there's two pieces to it, so I'm going to explain that here in just a second. Our PPO preliminary renewal is nine and a half percent. Our HMO preliminary renewal is 10.8%. Those are not done, done until April, and there is a distinct possibility they will come down. But there is one caveat that's already built into those percentages. And that's a 50 basis points or a 0.5% half a percent of the overall increase is to reinvest or rebuild some of the fund balance that was in the pool that was lost over the last two count, uh, two coverage years. So our coverage, coverage year again is nine, one through eight, 31. The last two plan years, the pool lost $27 million. So the amount of money that was put into the system compared to the amount of money that came out of the system and that was all based on utilization and significant increases in medical costs overall. The pool lost $27 million, 50 basis points or half a percent of that 9% and the 10.8% is to get similar to you. The pool has a minimum fund balance as a whole from the pool perspective. We have our balance, you have more than a million dollars in your own fund balance in the pool that we can use, really in any way that we want moving forward in the future, as long as there's proper notification. But that is a terminal reserve that belongs to District 200. There's also a reserve that's in there, a fund balance that's in there from the pool perspective. And that 50 basis points will go to help get the pool fund balance back up to a 25%. And that 25% allows us to pay for things when there's anomalies and the amount of funds that are being collected don't actually meet what is being spent. So preliminary, three months from now, we'll have the final. The numbers should probably be somewhere around there. I'm not expecting a dramatic increase or decrease ever, overall. The last couple of years, there's been flatline, but that's, but that's, that's been based on utilization. We think concerning what's already happened in the first three months, which is below the last couple of years, that they might be able to get some movement. Plus there's some fixed expenditures that are unknown at this point, that they are ballooning in terms of what they think is going to happen. What that means is in essence, if there's a 10% increase, you own 80% of that. So your increase would be 8%. We've got 8% built into medical and dental right now. Dental's at three, four as a whole for us right now. So there's probably some overstatement inside of this too, as, as it relates to the projections. We've got 5% in the years out, 5% is, we think is reasonable. That's how we've been budgeting in the past and that would actually get us back to normalcy within the pool prior to the last two years. Purchase services and supplies. So there's two categories there. So in the ed, sorry, oh, question.
Help me understand again the 8%. Is that our share of the 10? But is that 8% applied to the previous year?
Right now, the 8% is applied to the budget that we have. So yes, to the existing year's budget. Certainly if our actuals don't turn out to be the case, that would, that would bring.
Where I'm coming from is if the previous year, the number is 80% of the total, then don't we have that 80% increasing by the 10%, not 8%?
No, so what, what is in the model is the total. So everything put in from a board and an employee perspective. So what we're looking at in aggregate, your portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and my guess is we're, we're, we're probably going to be able to dial that back a little bit too. And if you think of it, so we've got roughly a $20 million aggregated budget this year for benefits. 8% is 1.6 million. If we claw that back, that starts getting into real dollars. And that certainly, challenge is, I'm not going to know that firm number until I think it's April 17th. Purchase services, supplies, so Ed Fund and O and M Fund, we're tracking a little bit less than CPI. That may change in the future, but we got a 2% bump in both purchase services and supplies just in the Ed Fund and the O and M Fund. Certainly will monitor that as it goes. That might be able, we might need to tick that up a little bit, but at least from a starting perspective, we think it's reasonable. Where we potentially are going to have a bigger challenge, and in fact, I talked to Illinois Central today, is purchase services for transportation. So we, we've got some, we're in the middle of negotiating where things are at right now. We've got two, two year extensions coming from Illinois Central and Sunrise. Illinois Central's first year that they're proposing to us is 16%. And I flat out told them today, I'm struggling with that and I'm not confident in bringing that conversation to the Board of Education. We need to think of some different things that we can do overall that we are. I am hoping that if something like I take overall fuel purchasing, because we're going to save on specific state income, state taxes related to fuel, diesel fuel, that could be something where it helps our, you know, right now in our, so we've got two, two sides of our contract with Illinois Central that are challenging. One is just they're, they're asking for a 16% increase over what they're getting this year. I don't think that's reasonable by any stretch, even though in year two, they're saying they would be comfortable with a four. So a 10 average over two, I still don't think is right, especially where CPI came in at. I know there's a couple of years of hurt, but I also don't, would not appreciate if they're trying to make some dollars on your back in the next couple of years after, after some challenging couple of years from their perspective. And then fuel, anytime they purchase diesel fuel that is above $1.95 plus whatever the federal excise tax is, we don't get charged for that, that's on them, we pay the difference. So if those two numbers are 220, let's just say 225 together and they bought diesel at $3 a gallon, we are reimbursing them for 75 cents. That needs to go away. That number for us was $500,000 last year. If I can take that over and get a lower per cost from our perspective and just remove that whole instrument from them, the time associated with doing that, I'm hoping that not only would remove that $500,000 line item that we had out the door last year, plus offset some of that 16%. So there is, I'm not planning on bringing you something February 14th, because I want to put as much pressure as I can on them and, and potentially delaying it to see if they'll, they'll move on it as a whole. Had a conversation with the district manager today. He's going back to finance to see if some of these ideas would work. And then any updates we'll certainly bring to the board moving forward. Beyond that, I've got 5% bump similar to medical and dental going forward. Not quite sure where things are at, but if you look at what they've offered from Illinois Central, 16 and 10, 16 and four, that four would fit into this five for year two.
If, if to your point, we were to take on the fuel purchasing, the savings is then both on the differential above that cap, but also then the tax benefit.
Yep, absolutely. On top of that, that fits into our transportation reimbursement then. So it's, it's, those costs are built into and we pay for right now. They're included in the transportation reimbursement. Those costs would just shift to us without paying that difference over what their average, what their cost is per gallon.
Is, is there an opportunity to piggyback on the purchase of fuel by either the city of Wheaton or DuPage County?
Good question. I do not know that. Something I certainly can explore. I wanted to first find out what the appetite from Illinois Central was and whether or not it's feasible. They do do this in other areas of the state. I've talked with Bloomington 87, who happens to have a massive underground tank. But they do all the purchasing themselves. They go, go through a specific outside vendor. And Illinois Central, who also serves that same district, doesn't have to worry about it whatsoever. There's no escalation costs and their renewal, so they shared their renewal with me. Their renewal was 11, eight and four without that factor built into it. So.
There may be some opportunities there to cooperate with other agencies to.
Correct. Yeah, certainly, certainly I'd be happy to look into it. Thank you for bringing that up. There's also some other districts in the area that use Illinois Central, specifically Batavia uses Illinois Central. They use a different yard, but they use Illinois Central. Their two year renewal with almost the exact same language, because we all shared information with each other, is 16 and a quarter and four. So that doesn't mean that 16 is better. I mean, it's a little better, but I, I think that's too egregious of a number in a single year, even with a low number in year two. So we're going to continue working till we get, get to a point where we're comfortable.
That's what they presented to Batavia or what Batavia accepted?
No, that's what they presented to Batavia. So they, they did, I've got four different district information pieces that they presented all in December. The format was the same, the language was very similar. So I have a good sense of what Illinois Central is looking for. All of us through email and or phone conversations agree, we don't like what they've presented and we're going to continue working through it.
I have two quick questions.
Sure.
You've talked a lot about Illinois Central. I thought you were cleaning it up too good. Are there other vendors that are under consideration?
There are not. So we are discussing an extension. I have a significant concern that if we go out to, first of all, the number of players in the area are less than that. So we really have first student, Illinois Central, and then maybe a one-off that has just started. That is the individual that used to run Illinois Central. He started a business further out west. We might get three submissions. I am not confident even at a 16% initial renewal request, that numbers would not come in higher than that. And, and I, and I base that on two different things. One, there is such a limited market for these services here that I think if we give them the chance to renew their numbers, meaning Illinois Central, they might look at it from a different perspective than they do today. Secondarily, we did this with waste management and garbage services, refuse services a couple of years ago, and it completely backfired. We thought that we would get some competitiveness from the market and everything came in higher than what the renewal was.
We, we did that prior to your time actually with transportation as well. And same thing happened. We saw a renewal that wasn't good, took it out to bid and the bids that we got back were infinitely higher than the, the renewal was that we turned down. So that, that is acknowledging, I think, you know, Eric, you brought up the last board meeting. The challenge in transportation is there just aren't a lot of players out there, right? There are two big players in this area. And so that really is having an impact of limiting some of the competitive, you know, pricing elements. Unfortunately, unlike some other services, that's not an easy service to just flip and say, okay, then let's get out of the third party market. Because what you then bring into play is not just, you know, the, the cost of operation. You bring in the need to actually find, locate a facility where you're going to house your buses, purchase all the equipment and all of those pieces. And so it, it is an aspect of I think school operations where we're, you know, we're, we're a bit over. it, it is an aspect of, I think, school operations where we're, you know, we're, we're a bit over a barrel. I think, you know, it doesn't mean there can't be some solutions we look at long-term. Maybe that's an area where some districts together need to think about starting a transportation company, right, that could serve as multiple districts. And that might become a little more feasible when you look at perhaps, uh, Naperville 203 or St. Charles, it does own a transportation yard and might have some, some pieces. But something's going to have to flip that market in the, in the coming years, or we're going to continue to see this.
And then the other question I had is, I know you're just in the preliminary stage of the idea of purchasing fuel. If we do that, would we also need a new structure of life?
Nope. No, they've got, they being, Illinois Central have two 2,500 gallon tanks onsite at the facility in Carroll Stream. Uh, one tank is completely dedicated to diesel. The other tank is 1,500 gallons diesel, 1,000 gallons regular gas, because they also have typical gasoline vehicles as a whole. Um, so that's, you know, when you look at the diesel side of things, it's 4,000 gallons. You know, I could actually secure through future markets and get guarantees on specific rates and then just turn it over to Illinois Central to get the supply when they need the supply and we get the bill. If given the opportunity, like Dr., if I could create cooperatives that would allow us in our most challenging areas to take control, I would love to. There's, there's some pretty deep steps to go through to get that. Even when you just think it's as easy to say, Naperville 203, you already do, you're on transportation, can we just jump on board? Like there's, there's a lot to walk through before we could do that. I personally think, as the individual responsible for your finances, it's in our best long-term interest to look into those opportunities. Just takes a lot of work to get there. If in fact, we can get there, because we need partners to do it too. So that's the expenditure side of things. And then just a couple of other ideas that the Finance Committee and Dr. Schuler wanted me to share with you that are not built into the projections. Some finite in terms of bits of information, we know what's coming, others that are significantly wider, but would fit within your five-year program. So we know the Jules settlement is coming soon. Uh, Dr. Schuler, last week, I believe, filled out all the required paperwork that will be, we're not sure if it's going to be wire or paper check yet, but in this fiscal year, we should be receiving that first Jule payment. Uh, you see, it's a, just a little bit north of $187,000. And then there are the same exact three future payments that will happen in '26, '27, '28. You see those dollar amounts of being 31663. We also know from Jules' new parent company, Altria, there's a settlement. We know what that settlement dollar is. It's 86,000, 669. We're not sure if that's coming in this fiscal year or next fiscal year, but we do know that it's coming. Certainly a conversation for the board in the future that was brought up in prior meetings and at the Finance Committee level. If we were to move back to or reinstate registration fees and registration fees alone that were changed when we moved from the 2021 school year to the 2122 school year, that would be about using this year's 10-day student count, about $940,000 in revenue per year that we would add into the model, whatever specific year that would come into play if it does. And then really the biggest piece, the biggest unknown, but something that we have to clearly be astute and aware of. TIF number three in Wheaton is set to expire on 12/31/28. That would mean in your tax levy for tax levy 28, we would put those incremental equalized assessed values into that tax levy, just like we did for TIF number two last year. So in, and, excuse me, in levy 2022. The equalized assessed value right now is around $35 million. So that would be $35 million in new property times the tax rate. Simple enough. Tax rate of $5 times 35 million. It's 1.75 million dollars right there in new property taxes that would get built into the model. Half of that in fiscal year '29 and then the other half in fiscal year '30, because it's split. But the other big piece, which we've already seen a, a portion of, so, uh, the city did declare a $3 million surplus for TIF number three. The city is projecting that they're going to have a total surplus minus the $3 million of 11.6 million at the end of this TIF life, which again is 12/31/28. We comprise about 70% of that. We do not anticipate that they're going to wait to then have all that surplus build up at the end. Probably doesn't make sense from a, from the city's perspective, but they control that decision. Maybe it's possible that we can see one or two, you know, surplus payments that happen in front of that, similar to what happened and is in your budget for this year, which again was $2,089,000. But that is something to think of when we're looking at a projection of five years. It's possible that 11.6 million times 70% is about $9 million. It's not an insignificant number when we look at the overall five-year projection. In addition to you getting those incremental equalized assessed values back as new property, fiscal year after fiscal year after fiscal year, that does very much potentially change the backend of what these projections look like.
What is the incentive for them dispersing the, um, the surplus early? Why, why do they choose to do that?
I would say certainly Dr. Schuler would step in if you've got more knowledge than what I'm about to, to say. I, I think there's, there's probably a perception of keeping that amount of surplus from the cities. I mean, we're talking a significant amount of money that has been collected as, that has not been designated for use within the TIF. So I'm not quite sure, just from a public perspective, if it makes sense. And then secondarily, I just think from a relationship perspective, if you know that there are no more significant, you know, they might do a couple of things. There might be a courthouse project related to the courthouse itself. Maybe there's some additional sewer or underground type of work, but certainly not going to eat up that amount of the surplus. I think it's also just being a good partner with those that are your constituents and those that have supported, you know, your, your TIFs overall.
I, I think there's a reasonable chance that that TIF is going to end early. I don't know that that TIF will actually run all the way out to its expiration. But, uh, my, my sense is that, again, there are one or two other projects that the city is watching to see. I think there's a flood mitigation project that they're considering. Uh, and I think they want to see if that is going to happen before they were to end the TIF. Because once it, obviously, once it ends and it just rolls on to, you know, the, the other taxing pieces. So again, I, I, I think one way or another, there's actually a really good chance that you're going to see those dollars. I think it's just a question of whether you see it through surplus distributions or a distribution at the end or that TIF rolls off and you begin to see it in, obviously, new construction dollars that stay with you in perpetuity.
Any, any money out of that that they spend would have to be spent within the TIF district.
Correct, from the city's side.
I think they pretty well.
Yeah, there's just not much there. I think, again, there's one potential flood mitigation project and, and as Dr. Keith mentioned, the courthouse piece.
And, and good point. Now that TIF two is closed, you can actually port money between TIFs, but now that TIF two is closed, there's nowhere for those dollars to go. They're in, they're in TIF three and they're not going anywhere else. So all that leads to what you see up on the screen and what you have in front of us, in front of you. And that's what the outcome of these assumptions and knowns built into the five-year projections. What I will say to start with, and as a reminder, this is not how the future is going to look. This is one perspective of how, of how the future could look. If everything that we're assuming and that we know today was to stay the same, we know for a fact that will not be the case as time moves forward. So just to orient you, uh, if you look at the orange one, so all the numbers in here are the same between the orange and the yellow. Top's the only thing that's different is the fund balance at the bottom. So we don't need to go through each one of these. I'll explain what this looks like and then point out something that I think is very significant from a structural conversation perspective. Far left, very far left, you see different categories. So you've got revenue breakdowns, expenditure breakdowns. You get to a first line of surplus or deficit, and then we get into really our Sherman Durgis below that. And then you get some final fund balances as a whole, and then we get down to your fund balance percentage. Again, the orange highlighted one is based on your annual, uh, annual financial report. And these fund balance percentages that are in your board policy are tied to your AFR. So this one is specifically these fund balance percentages. If they were to hold true, you would have to make sure that they hold true against what your board policy is. The yellow highlighted one is the cash basis side of things. That just gives you a different perspective on what happens dollar in, dollar out at a moment in time. First column, Budget 2024. Top half, you see revenue. That number's 2137. You see expenditures right below that. And then you see a operating surplus or deficit. The operating surplus or deficit in this specific line, which is halfway down the page, is what relates to your board policy in terms of a balanced operating budget. These bottom line numbers are, add in Sherman Durgis, which is outside of your fund balance and your specific operating budget balance percentages. It's this mid-level here of what operating balances. So that tells me whether or not we are structurally sound before we make commitments on the capital side of things. So that's the middle of the page. So if you see surplus deficit for Budget 24, it's 9,655,535. That's the line I'm referring to. Right below that is your $6 million commitment to Sherman Durgis in the current fiscal year. And as a reminder, that dollar amount is less than what we typically would have added, because you actually had almost $2 million worth of Esser funds that were for prior capital expenditure reimbursements that, under your audit, you were required to put in the capital projects plan, not in O and M. That's why you see only 6 million this year, not the almost 8 million of what it would be. Then you come to an adjusted surplus or deficit. Then you see your beginning fund balance. Again, that's your AFR fund balance. As of fiscal year '23, you add those two numbers together, and then to the bottom, your fund balance board policy is based on revenue percentages. So it's your overall fund balance compared to your overall revenues. And you see at the end of this year, it's probably going to be a little bit higher, but then at the end of this year, a projected fund balance percentage of just, just a bit smidgen below 32%, which fits into your 25 to 40% overall window for your board policy. That means we would have about not quite four months of operating cash on hand. As you move to the right, then you just move through each fiscal year with the assumptions that we've talked about. So what we're projecting for fiscal year '25, which again will change, is roughly a 4 million operating surplus. Then we build in all of the board-approved known projects for this coming summer, which are almost 8.1 million. That gets you to what looks like a deficit. Technically it is. As a whole, it would be a fund balance reduction deficit, not an operating deficit, which would then, if we look at what, if we move over the, the projected fund balance, subtract that, then you move down to a fund balance percentage that's a little bit lower moving forward and as you, as you progress the rest of the years. Our, our challenge is, we, we look at it from an operating perspective. So I still want to make sure this is always balanced. And we will get there and it will be, but if we're purely looking at your infrastructure, your structure overall from an operating side of things, that's the middle line there. That's your surplus deficit. That's the middle line. You see fiscal year '25, even though I need to get whole unless the board authorizes using some of its fund balance, is a surplus of more than 4 million. A small, very small deficit projected in fiscal year '26. Little bit of a bigger projected operating deficit, but still controllable in fiscal year '27. And then you see as you get out to '28, '29, where you get into roughly a $3 million mark, which would certainly look at some maneuvering. Still have to make sure that we're doing Sherman Durgis. So those bottom line numbers are still important, but from a structural perspective, we're in a pretty good place moving forward for the next couple of years. I, though, am responsible to bring you a balanced operating budget and certainly without board approval for using fund balance, a balanced bottom line budget too. And that's what we'll work towards.
All right, board, questions?
Can I just, um, follow up on what you just finished with?
Yep.
So it looks like in fiscal year '26 to '27, we would fall below the 25 to 40% fund balance. So how do we rectify that?
So that's certainly, that's after taking into account Sherman Durgis. So.
Correct. Like, I don't think we cannot take in account.
Agreed, which, which is why the numbers are in here. We would certainly have to look at what adjustments do we need to make that we, that we don't get below that, that would start with next year. So let's assume that, that the board's desire is not to use fund balance in fiscal year '25 to help support Sherman Durgis, and that needs to be balanced. So that potential $4 million deficit is wiped out. All of a sudden, that changed, that changes fiscal year '26 and your overall fund balance and changes fiscal year '27 and that fund balance too. So what, what we're certainly going to have to have a discussion in the future about, you have the ability within your board policy to use fund balance to support your capital projects. You also have a fund balance policy that says you need to be within a 25 to 50% range. So we're going to have to balance those two. Maybe it's earmarking some dollars that have come in that have not been used specifically. For instance, this year, TIF number, TIF number three surplus, that $2 million plus came in, it's not earmarked towards anything in the future. You could say, we would like to consider that as restricted, a restricted fund balance. We'd like to use that towards capital projects in the future. Brian, we would be comfortable if, if this $4 million number would be $2 million, because then we would be earmarking the TIF surplus that came in to support our capital projects. So yes. There's going to be a point where we're going to have to make some changes to make sure that your fund balance policy stays true. Today, I'm not worried about it. I'm, I'm not worried about it because I know what we're discussing today is not what your tentative budget's going to look like, not what your final budget is going to look like. There are plenty of steps and mechanisms that we still have to go through to analyze and assess whether or not we're being too conservative on the expenditure side, too conservative on the revenue side. There's a lot that will happen in the next five and a half months, as Dr. Schuler mentioned. But the board also will have to consider in the future, if you're at a 32, 33% fund balance percentage, would you like to use some of that fund balance moving forward to help support capital projects? If not, then I need to figure out how this becomes balanced. And if so, whatever you would authorize to use would then be the deduction from your fund balance as a whole.
We, we, I would, in my head, what I think about it is, is this, this is a strategic point of view, right? And we can see, just using the broad assumptions, that we have some gaps that we need to address in the future. We have this whole series of levers we know about today and some we don't know about yet that will become apparent, that we can pull each year to align fund balance and make sure we're, we're, we have a balanced budget as well. That's just how, is that the right way to think about this?
Yep. And, and truly, I think we're, I think we're conservative on the revenue side. If you look at a change in CPI, so we've got CPI at two and a half percent for four years. If we change that to 2.6, it's, it's one-tenth of one percent. It doesn't seem like much. But that's multiplied by $150 million plus. So all of a sudden, that's $150,000 in new revenue right there, just with one-tenth of one percent of a change in CPI. So there, there are plenty of unknowns that are still yet to happen that will actually factor into this that may very well make these assumptions look different and, and, and have these bottom line overall estimations at this point not seem as much of a mountain to climb.
I also think it's important to note that, not just looking at the fund balance, wherever we have negatives on the middle row, we can't have negatives. So we have to solve that and that then reduces the amount of deficits. It's still, I mean, there's still a big challenge with the Sherman Durgis, but to me, we need to more be looking at those surplus and deficit ones. Fund balances kind of kind of take care of itself.
And I appreciate the conservative approach, like not overestimating where we will be. I still kind of would like to see Sherman Durgis even be higher than the 7.8 million. So looking at that far out, five or six years out, that we're still only at 7.8 million.
Yeah, and, and really that 7.8 million, and thank you for bringing that up, is really comprised of three things within the Capital Project Fund itself. 7.2 million for Sherman Durgis, 500,000 for playgrounds, 500,000 for architectural fees, because that's where your architectural fees come out of. It's quite possible that architectural fees will not be that. It's quite possible that architectural fees will not be that, and you very well could shift a portion of what we've set aside in here from the assumption perspective over the Sherman Dirges if that means we can still stay within where you need to be from your fund balance perspective.
Brian, just a question, so I can tease it out, though, both on the revenue side. So again, you spent some time talking about TIF III and that roll-off. This is also not accounting for what is actually a pretty significant development going in the block by Egg Harbor.
Correct.
From my understanding, that's projected to be about $130 million development as well.
Yeah, and EAV would be a third of that. I have no doubt that they would file a tax protest right off the bat in that case, but even a $30 million EAV equalizes asset value, let's say, in that, times a tax rate of $5. Tax rate may not be that in the future, but let's just say $5. That's $1.5 million in new revenue right there.
It's not unreasonable to assume in whatever year constructed and that it comes on the tax rolls, that new construction, new property for that year is probably going to be double where you have it sitting in the projection.
Correct. The challenge with, absolutely right. While there are unknowns in here, we have kept any true unknowns out of here because I don't want to make assumptions without some form of data to help support it as a whole. The challenge with new construction is new construction is based off of what is defined as of January 1st. And then we get to December when you actually approve the levy, and then one month later, there's new construction again. So any development that's really early in the process as of January 1st is not going to show up on that tax levy. It will show up on the tax levy after, on the tax levy after, just like neighbor commons.
I get that, so I'm not, I didn't bring that up. You know, I get why it's not in the model because we don't know when and exactly how it's going to fit into the model. I guess I bring it up simply for the purpose of saying, as Rob said, as you're thinking about and looking at those levers that are going to drive this up and down, there are some pretty significant revenue levers that are going to sit out here somewhere in the five-year model, which, you know, again, all the more reason to say we need to look out and be aware of it and start to make some really sound decisions, but also recognize the fact that if you overreacted way too early in this planning process, right, then there are some other things that could change that might cause you down the road to say, boy, we shouldn't have overreacted and made some of the adjustments we did because, you know, then on the back end, you're just going to start to really see that fund balance element skyrocket, right? So it's a balance between doing all you need to do on the operating side, obviously the teaching and learning side, obviously addressing, you know, capital pieces. But, you know, I think projections, good to look to the next fiscal year. It's probably good to look with a greater level of certainty, one more out. I think as you get three years out, just take all of this with some understanding that there are going to be shifts.
When I compared this to what we looked at last spring, you know, the out years, 25 forward, the deficit were very close. For fiscal year 24, we had a big change and a big group. So the point being, like now, we really just need to be focusing on 25 because 26 is going to be very different. I mean, these revenue numbers can change in a huge way in a short amount of time. And the expenses as well. So I think that's to the point of, because we could get a warm, fuzzy feeling by just pushing a couple levers in the model and making everything on here black. And so I think, so I just, the whole point of what I'm saying is not too concerned about 26, 27, 28 yet because it's going to change. You know, if we get to 25 and these numbers are worse, so I just think in the out years, it's a lot of business. I like the narrative around structural changes, right? Fuel purchase, TIF expiring, right? Those are big structural things that we know will continue in the out years. Doing little things, there's no value to it right now, in my opinion. Remind me about all the kindergarten.
That's in here, so that revenue that starts for the '27, '28 school year, which is fiscal year '28, the existing revenue that we have projected for this year of about $1.25 million has been pulled out.
That's a number, right? Thanks.
That's a known.
Yep.
Put that in there for the model. Yep.
But we'll round out what we're changing. We'll find out today because we never came to a final.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Can we, so just from a variable side, Robin, actually, I think your entry point was a good one, right? As you start to look at some of the structural pieces, there's a couple of other pieces of information that I just wanted to share with you because I think they will impact kind of structure. So obviously, one of the other huge structural elements in your budget planning is simply headcount, right? Like 70-plus percent of your budget is in salary and benefits. And obviously, what that budget item is comprised of, right, is kind of two variables in and of itself, how much you're paying people and how many people you're paying, right, in that amount. So a couple of other things that I just wanted to make you aware of, and then I'll let a few people just explain the pieces from a headcount perspective. So one, I've given you the District 200 enrollment chart that actually goes back to 17, 18 and walks up to this current year. Couple of things, right, in that, as we've talked about. So enrollment in this current year, right, the first year in a little while where we've kind of started to dip back up. A big driver behind that is actually younger enrollments that have exceeded what were projections and seemed to be driving that number up, just as a point of kind of remembering or anchoring years. So 19, 20, that was the school year that was interrupted in March. 2021, year coming out of the pandemic, and we made some really significant changes, both in overall headcount, but how that headcount was used. So that was the year where we completely readjusted the class sizes for the in-person experience, plus we were operating a virtual academy that was educating about 1,300 kids in a fully virtual space. We reassigned a lot of the headcount that are actually represented in your specialist and classroom ratio chart within that year. And then in the years that have followed since that, really that 2021 school year, what we've begun to do is to kind of rebalance both headcount that went to just your core overall enrollment with the headcount on the specialist and the kind of the classroom ratio chart, right? So in other words, we reinstated a lot of those instructional support positions that have been supporting the work that Melissa and team have been doing in learning acceleration and support for students and actually slowly bringing our class size, core class size numbers, back up toward the ratios that they were staffed at in that 19, 20 year, right? So the year that led into kind of shutdown in March. We are staffing into next year with those pre-pandemic class size target ratios. So again, just built into the headcount piece, if that's a discussion, have at a future meeting we can, but they are going to be staffed at the assumption of 26, 28, 30. Chris, am I saying that right? Do you want to just recapture that by grade level?
Yeah, so exactly right. 26 would be the cap or maximum for a kindergartner, first grade class, 28 for second and third grade, again, a maximum, and 30 being the cap for fourth and fifth grade. Doesn't mean all classes have that amount of students added. It means, once we get over that number, that's when we're looking at adding an additional human resource.
So I think question has been asked, and again, so this is one of the other data elements, just want to make you aware of because I think it's going to impact planning into next year. So second chart I want you to look at is one that says specialist and classroom ratio charts have Chris walk into. So the story of where some of the headcount has gone in the years where you saw core enrollment go down is actually captured in this specialist and classroom ratio chart. These numbers have gone up. So as some of our core classroom numbers, just the overall number of sections that we've had, have gone down, where we've seen increases in staff is in support for our multilingual programs, support for reading and math intervention, which were enhanced through the use of your federal dollars. But again, as you looked at the financial projection, the positions that were supported through your federal resources, we've left in the model. So we have not removed those resources that went to math intervention, reading intervention pieces. So they're left in your model. So I think some of what we lost in core classroom staff and as enrollment numbers went down, went into the chart where we looked at ratios. And so we've answered questions, and I think just important for the board to understand, and again, it's a strategy discussion we can have later if you wish to, but as we've talked to parents that have raised concerns or asked questions about class size, we've answered it through understanding this chart that really looks at a ratio, right, by building. So how we're supporting students is a function of, obviously, core staff assigned to classrooms, but also staff that are supporting students inside of those classrooms and are pulling students out of the classrooms for key times. Again, that includes your multilingual staff, your reading intervention coaching staff, your math intervention coaching staff, PACE teachers that are pulling groups of students out, and that tied with your class section, right, is what gets you to kind of your overall ratio that just helps people understand instructional staff supporting students compared to kind of that ratio. That makes sense? I'm not advocating a specific discussion around it. I just want you to know from a planning perspective, embedded in the headcount of this model, at least as of right now, as we're planning for next year, is that kind of move back to those pre-pandemic class size targets that we've been using, but the assumption of continued support in these kind of structured support areas. Difference is that I don't think our overall enrollment is going to continue to go down. I think it's going to go up. So it is entirely possible, as we staff to those ratios, that some of the efficiencies perhaps we've gained in class size numbers of sections going down, I don't know that we're going to see into next year. And I think as you look specifically at some of our special populations that I want to talk a little bit more about or have Melissa talk about, you're also going to see some pressure points when we look at headcount. Clear? Can I answer any kind of questions around these data points that I just think important to know and understand?
I have a question. So when you said that the shift to pre-pandemic staffing models is what's reflected in the use for the five-year assumptions, is it consistent throughout all the five years? Or are you also factoring in potential increases in students that you referenced?
Yeah. We are not factoring in, so I think this is built on an assumption of kind of level headcount moving forward. So any pressure that might increase overall headcount, whether that be just core sections and/or multilingual student support, special education target, you know, student support, those increases are not referenced in that model. So that would be an upward pressure point, at least from an expenditure side, right? An assumption of headcount increased by what we know to be the salary increases are included in the model, but we don't have an escalator for headcount built into the five-year projections as of right now.
I mean, I'm not sure I would. We don't know, other than what's happening year over year currently, what's going to happen.
Agreed, but I just want to make sure that the board is kind of aware of some of the variables. Melissa, do you want to just talk through the multilingual chart so we can kind of understand that? And then really, the latter half of your presentation is in kind of understanding some of the trends that we're seeing in the student service program as well.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Schuler. So inside the green folder as well was another chart. There's like a color band of blue and pink at the top of it. It's a two-sided document, actually, with some, the chart on the front that I'll walk you through and then some like additional context on the back. So when you look at this chart, just orient you to this, obviously, I've listed out all of our schools, and then this is all about multilingual learners. So the columns across would be the total student enrollment for multilingual learners this school year. The next column are, these are students that are exited from the program, but the state requires us to monitor their academic performance over a two-year period. And so they're called monitor students. They're not factored into the total multilingual enrollment, but we can't forget that they have language needs and they don't look exactly like a regular Gen Ed student in the classroom. They're no longer getting multilingual supports, but they do have needs. So that's why that's captured on here. And then you'll see the newcomers column. This is a column we've, I've talked to you about, if you recall, last year around this time period. I said we're seeing a growing uptick in this area. And so that's captured MLFT, so that's the number of staff we have dedicated to supporting our multilingual learners. And then I've also, the pink column is just the number of multilingual learners last year. Few things I wanted to point out to you on here. The total enrollment is up again for multilingual learners. We're up 136 students this year. Last year, we ended the year at 127 newcomers. That's not captured on this document, but you can see that this year in January, we're already at 136 newcomers. So that's something that we're hearing a lot from our schools, that we are getting a lot of newcomers again this year. Our largest populations are Wheaton North has now, Johnson was our largest population at the start of the year, but now Wheaton North has gone past them. So we've got Wheaton North, Johnson, Wheaton Warrenville South, and Pleasant Hill are our four largest populations of multilingual learners. And then two, I do want to point out, we have schools that we've been watching all year because they've had an increase over the course of the year. So Wheaton North had an increase, the largest increase. Bauer was the second largest increase, Sandberg, Wheaton Warrenville South, and Washington as well. We have increased staff over the course of the year. So Mr. Biskin, myself, Dr. Pueyo have worked on this throughout the year, monitoring the student enrollment and the needs and listening to the feedback of our staff. So we have added a little bit of staff at three different buildings over the course of the year. And so that's the actual staffing and enrollment information. I would just draw your attention to the backside. This is just some trends that I wanted to capture and share with the board because this is part of that feedback loop from our own administrators, but also our multilingual staff or our general education staff. These are the things that I'm hearing from them that I thought were important to share with all of you. First, and I've organized this by level, so I'm going to start with elementary and then work down into middle school and high school. So at the elementary level, we always think about servicing our multilingual learners. We kind of think about them in two groups. We think about our newcomers because they have very specific needs. Obviously, they're brand new to the school, they have very limited language skills in English, so they need more support. And then we think about our students who have been here for a few years or have higher language levels. We are feeling pressure on being able to service our newcomers to the full extent that we want to because of that increasing number. Newcomer students need more time during the school day with a multilingual specialist, and we're feeling pressures around that amount of time that we're able to service them at the elementary level. the elementary level. And we also support our, our students not just in a pull-out setting, but within the classroom too. So our multilingual specialist will see students in a small group outside of the classroom, the newcomers, and then they'll go into the classroom during the reading and writing part of the day to support those students. And so right now, we're, we're able to support our multilingual learners for one of the three bookworm blocks. If you remember, there were like three blocks to bookworms, they're able to get support during one of those. So those are considerations we're looking at because we're trying to determine the amount of support our students need as well there. At middle school, right now, we have a steering committee for social studies. In fact, I was with that group today. It's about the third time we've met with them, and each time we meet with them, we've heard challenges that that group of teachers is facing along with our science teachers at the middle school level because we do not have co-teaching in place at, for science and social studies at the middle school in those two subject areas. We do for language arts, we do for math, but we do, currently do not have staff that co-teach with, for, with Gen Ed, science or social studies teachers for those subject areas. And that's really something we're looking at because of that increase in the newcomers. That's on our radar. We have students that are considered duly identified, so they are special ed and multilingual learners, and they do need multilingual specialist services. And so we're feeling challenges on how to balance both of those. That's a high school and a middle school situation we're monitoring as well. And then two, we have in our contract, we have our middle school and high school coordinators that support the testing of new students, paperwork and whatnot. And so obviously, as our enrollment increases with multilingual learners, we have to adjust that support piece too. So that's just high-level information for the board in terms of what we're seeing in terms of enrollment, but also the practical boots-on-the-ground feedback we're hearing from our, from our staff.
I have a question. When, I was reviewing some of the list of, you know, schools that were closed, but there was one that caught my attention, it was a newcomer academy for one of the high school area districts where they had set up a centralized location. Are we at a point where that's something that is better for students, better, you know, use of resources?
So it's interesting you say that. We are definitely, within my department and with multilingual specialists, we've started those conversations about like, what are the best services for our newcomers? In fact, there, you may remember, I've talked about EAB before. It's a service that we work with each year that gives us research on, you know, trends in education. And actually, my team is actually looking at a research study that's about servicing newcomers at the secondary level that talks about that model versus the model that we're currently in. And that's something that we're at a point now with my team that we want to study that and kind of, and bring that conversation really to our administrative team to start to think through what's the research saying and what, what are the needs of our, for our students? So we're at preliminary stages, but we're definitely talking about like the models to supporting newcomers is something that's on the radar and we need to dive more deeply into.
So a follow-on question to that. I don't know if the increase in newcomer rates is similar in neighboring districts. I don't know if you know the answer to that, but you know, I wonder, is there an opportunity to have some discussions across districts similar to the model we use for technology education with Technology Center of DuPage? Could there be a cooperative academy opportunity?
What I, here's how I'll answer the question in terms of what I'm hearing from my colleagues. So I have some networks that I meet with regularly. It's the DuPage ROE has a group that are folks that are in similar roles to me. We get together multiple times during the school year, and I'm on the steering committee, so I have more meetings with some folks too. And then our LUDA district, we work together too several times a year. And the growing number of multilingual learners is something that does come up into every conversation. But every school district is really talking about how we're meeting the needs within our own school districts right now, so.
And then my other question, the, the number of newcomers at the high school level is surprisingly large, and I can imagine that for someone who is arriving as a newcomer, it's probably difficult to achieve graduation requirements if you're that disadvantaged from a language perspective. Similar to how the state accommodates education through 22 for special needs students, is there any accommodation for extended attendance to meet graduation requirements?
No. But I certainly think that we face, face challenges when we're talking about making sure our students are getting everything they need within that time period.
That comment. So talking about not having the co-teaching during science and social studies at the middle school level, it just kind of maybe speaks to something that happens in other areas too. And I, I worry that there are certain students across the board that we're not setting up for success because to be in a classroom where, like, are they getting outside support? Outside, I, I, I'm not sure how they function successfully without some support in those classes.
This is why. It's definitely a bullet point on this document that we're.
I know, and I think the, and I know we're going to be talking about special ed too, like, the concerning thing is like tomorrow, like tomorrow, we have kids in classes who are not being supported. And I, I absolutely appreciate that we're in the beginning stages of kind of looking into this and discussing ideas, but I do like, those are the concerns that maybe would keep me up at night, like that we have kids who are going to school tomorrow morning and put in situations that are difficult. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
So we were referencing pressure points, right? And that, I think that's kind of on the back of the page, right?
Yes.
So we just had a conversation about the five-year financial projection. We're talking about pressure points, and then each year, we're going to work through, how do we take the red out of the, the plan on a year-by-year basis? So as a, what should we be thinking about as a board with those kind of three pieces of data? This is an inform session, where this isn't, there's nothing more than that.
Yep.
Will the finance committee work through that? Is that, how would, how does that, how's it going to manifest itself at the board level from a decision? Cut to Angela's point a little bit.
Yeah, it's fair, I guess, fair question, Rob. I don't know, I have immediate, I don't know that I have an immediate answer for you other than to, I think, one, understand that, you know, again, as, as we, we plan forward, I, I don't know, I don't have an immediate answer for you, right? I mean, I think, one, as we move forward in building the staffing plan, I think at the board level, you, you're probably going to have a point of, of entry into just understanding what we may bring to you as here are some recommended adjustments or changing to, changes to staffing next year.
Got it.
I want you to understand where some of those pieces sit. I, I want you to some degree equipped to understand that, that I, and I hear what you're saying around there, but, but just as you have perhaps that same concern around maybe what would be the ideal or the perfect staffing scenario or situation in multilingual and all of our student services program, the, the reality is we do have a finite resource allocation that has to support that. So if we want to, if we decide we need to attack that multilingual need, there's a practical reality, the co-teaching is very expensive. I, I get it, but it is a very expensive resource-based model, and so, you know, we, we just have to be cognizant of understanding that if you give us the charge to perhaps investigate or look at certain areas, you're going to have to also give the support or the understanding that that means something's going to have to be pulled from one of the other staffing buckets, right? And, and so at, at the, the very minimum, because I think you've heard some points of conversation around just the whole issue of why are we kind of returning to the pre-pandemic class size levels, the, the sort of immediate post-pandemic levels that we were staffing at were not sustainable with these other resource supports? They're just flat out would not be. You could not, you know, as, as ideal as some would, would say, gosh, classes of like 20 are awesome and, and perfect. That's not sustainable with these other resource allocations. So we have to return to at least that, that core staffing model to be able to juggle. So Rob, that's not a straight-line answer other than I think the board will see it as we move into some of those staffing discussions and may perhaps even bring some of the sort of forced choices that we might have to make inside of the, the staffing model to understand we put a little bit more here, something's going to come out, you know, somewhere else, right? We, we have held sacred some of the staff that we've had allocated to some of our other intervention areas. We may have to look at that, right? At, at some point in time, you know, what, what has traditionally sat inside of reading intervention or some of the other areas doesn't mean that those supports are not going to be there. They may have to be kind of readjusted or targeted to a different level of need.
No, I appreciate the foundational education understanding for the board, right? It's, it's a step in the process, so it's actually very good. Thank you.
And that was the, while not with a solution, we introduced a portion, I think Julie was at the CAC meeting last week where they, not, not nearly the dive that, that you're getting, but we started to introduce some of the concepts so that they understood that as well, to say, you know, like, like that's kind of how this puzzle fits together. So you really want to have a class size discussion, then, then we have to talk about some of these other, you know, the support pieces as well. I think the other thing in just in, in kind of the context of, of, of time and wanting to get through the last piece to set this context, I think from a previous discussion that I think the board had that actually originated out of a, a coffee with the board discussion on a weekend, that I think a couple of board members had just asked for a better understanding of student service programs, special education programs and some of the language that you may hear as you hear programs described. That's where we actually want to move into for the last little chunk, is actually giving you some of that understanding. And then almost in the same way you just got in the multilingual program, I do want you to understand some of the pressure points we're seeing in the student service program as well, because that is one of the other kind of pressure point levers that we're wrestling with as we're, we're beginning to build staffing plan for next year. So if it's okay, can we move into that last little chunk? And then again, we'll, we'll try to answer any questions.
Can I just pose one more question? So, you know, looking at the specialist plus classroom ratio sheet, you know, it looks like on average, 30% of the individuals in that classroom educating children are specialists. As we talk about ratios, you know, rather than looking at the 26, 28, 30, should we be defining those ratios going forward based on more of this logic? I guess, is there a reason not to look at it that way as the number of, I'd say, non-core staff are delivering the education?
Yeah, I think fair. I mean, again, so Eric, let me just make sure I understand the question. You're really talking more about anchoring on that last column of the, the kind of staff-to-student ratio rather than just the core class size number.
Yeah, because I mean, core class size feels like it's increasingly, I don't want to say irrelevant, but you know, you may look at that number of 30 and say, wow, that's a lot of kids. But then when you look at the other people that are assisting with educating those children because of the mix of needs, I think it's a very different scenario now.
Yes. Yeah.
Just food for thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I think it's fair.
So that was the overview about multilingual learners, but I've invited this evening Erica Ekstrom, who's our executive director for special education, who just does a phenomenal job leading that department. She's going to provide you with an overview of some special ed programming and really talking, taking a dive into, one, I wanted the board to get some context with regards to the types of programs and the continuum of programming that we do offer within our district, because you do hear these names, and I wanted you to have some just general working knowledge of what are those programs? And then second, she's just going to talk to you about where we're seeing some pressure points with regards to her adjustments in our population, specifically to special education. And so I'll turn this over to Erica now.
Thank you all for having me here today. In your green folders, there are two different handouts. One is the slide deck that I'll be going through today, and then there's also a supplemental document. We'll go over it broadband, but this gives you the greatest amount of information regarding our range of programming. So as Melissa shared, one of the things, especially when we're thinking about how the population is changing over time, it's really helpful to even have just an understanding of what our range of special education service is. The best document to take a look at those range of programs is in your supplemental handout. By far, our largest range of, our largest program within the district is our resource level program. That serves, that services most of our students with disabilities in the district. Services are a wide range of services. They could be push-in, they could be pull-out, they could be co-teaching, they could be consult. But an anchor of the resource program is, is that the students are accessing the general education curriculum and special education teachers are supporting students in participating in that curriculum, growing in that curriculum. Resource is present at all of our schools, all the way from elementary through high school.
Before, can you just define those terms for me? Push-in, pull-out?
Yep. Push-in is where a specialist, whether it's speech and language pathologist or a special ed teacher goes into the classroom and they support during a particular lesson or support with a particular skill. Pull-out is when they remove the students. And co-taught is a more structured format of push-in services. They're typically there on a more consistent schedule, three, four, five days a week. There's another layer of special education programs. I'm going to refer to them most of the time today as an instructional program. An instructional program is where the students are supported most of the day with a special education teacher, and most of the students in the class are a student with a disability. All of our students have access to their non-disabled peers. All of them have opportunities to be within general education, but for this unique population of students, their individualized education team at their IEP meeting determined that their best supports happen within a specialized program that is designed to provide more intensive supports and services. So there are a few that go all the way from elementary through high school. One of those programs is our skills program. In special ed, we love our acronyms, but SKILS stands for Supporting Kids in Lifelong Learning Social Emotional Skills. The hallmark of this program is we are providing intensive social, emotional, executive functioning and behavioral supports to students. These students are accessing grade-level curriculum, but they need the support of a special education teacher and a variety of other individuals that I'll talk about in order to make growth and participate. Another K-12 program is our essentials program. That program gets its name from the learning standards that students are working on. So those learning standards are the Illinois Essential Elements. They are linked to the Illinois Learning Standards, but they're the most foundational skills. So this program is, is designed to meet those needs of students and provide intensive services in the areas of daily life skills, functional academics, community awareness, recreation and leisure, vocational skills, and a variety of other skills to help students access not only the school community, but the community at large. We do have some instructional programs that are really unique to elementary. The first program is our PISA program, Primary and Intermediate Supportive Academic Program. So this program provides intensive special education services in the content areas of reading, math, writing, social skills, behavior, speech and language. The students are using the general education curriculum, but it's modified. A special education teacher is making adjustments to that programming based upon the individual needs of the students within that classroom. Our last elementary-specific instructional program is our SAIL program. It stands for Social Academic Integrated Learning. It provides. program is our SAIL program. It stands for Social Academic Integrated Learning. It provides intensive services in the areas of communication, social interaction, sensory and behavioral regulation, and how all of those combine together in order to help a student access their courses such as reading, writing and math. While our SAIL program services a wide range of students who are eligible for special ed under a variety of different labels, the primary eligibility area tends to be our students with autism. A unique type of instructional program that is unique to secondary is our direct level program. Now, that program is where a special education teacher provides instruction in all the general education courses that you would see at a secondary level. Reading, math. At the high school level, we start to add in some of those graduation requirement classes of science and social studies. Again, the students in this level of programming, they utilize the general education curriculum, but the special education teacher makes adjustments based upon the unique profile of learners within that classroom. So that is a broadband overview. The chart will tell you where they're located and a little bit more information.
Can you add any further color then to the differentiation between resource and direct?
So with resource, a lot of the services are within the general education classroom. So while a teacher may pull out, it is for a portion of the day. Where direct, and the reason why it's unique to the secondary level is when we move to the secondary model, classes are, schedules are built based upon a course period. So direct relates to what the subject matter is. So in the same way that you have a co-taught English Language Arts class where a special ed teacher is within that subject matter with the general ed teacher, a direct level class is a classroom comprised only of special ed students. It's typically smaller. They're utilizing the general education curriculum. However, it is customized and individualized based upon those 13 students that you have in the classroom. To help give a little bit of what a classroom looks like, by all means, this slide will dive in just a little bit more, but just some areas that I want to highlight to paint a picture of what instruction looks like. Where a typical elementary class could range anywhere from 26 to 30 students, our instructional elementary classrooms on average range from six to 10 students. While a general education classroom may have specialists that push in throughout the day intermittently, our instructional classrooms have designated additional staff that are in there all day with them. I'll explain who those staff members are. While there are independent work times during some portion of the school day, typically our students within our instructional programs need support all day long. Our students are utilizing various general education curriculums such as Bookworms, Illustrative Math and other District 200 Common Materials. While we use common materials in our instructional program, they are customized and individualized for each student. So that's just kind of a broad overview of what our types of programs are, what they may look like. Similar to other student populations that you've heard about tonight, we are seeing shifting trends within our special education population. Most of numbers two and number three, I'm really going to focus on those instructional programs. So in 2019, we had a total of 34 instructional programs. For this school year, the 2023, 2024 school year, we have 41 instructional programs. We are seeing growth at all levels, but much like our district trends, we are seeing the largest growth at our elementary classrooms, elementary level. As I alluded to earlier, there are a variety of educators that really help to support our students within the instructional classrooms. Every classroom has at least one designated special education teacher. On average, an instructional classroom also has two to three teaching assistants. But there's also a whole range of related service providers that are necessary to support our students. So with each instructional classroom, we need to allocate related service staff such as speech and language pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist, nurses, psychologists, social workers. We are also seeing changes at our elementary resource level programming. So as I talked about, these are students who are primarily supported within the general education classroom and those specialists are using a variety of ways to service them, but they're using the general education curriculum and most often is within that general education setting. What is unique at the elementary level, and it really has to do with our special education teachers' training, is not only do our special ed teachers support our students who have already been determined to be eligible for an individualized education plan, they're also helping our tier-three, tier-threes, when students are accessing tier-three interventions, the school building has utilized a variety of other specialists to try and meet their needs, but their student data is indicating that they need even more intensive support. And this is where they are able to be serviced by our special education teachers. And we are seeing a steady increase in students needing services even at this resource level. So what are we monitoring as we're moving forward for our 2025 staffing plans? It is helpful to know some of the actions that we've already taken. So all of our teachers as of this year, or all of our new teachers, have access to our mentoring program. As I alluded to, our instructional staff, our related service staff, these are unique positions. So we do have a, those individuals who are able to be mentored by like professionals and they really focus on topics unique to supporting students within student services. We're regularly monitoring feedback loops such as our morale survey. We're shadowing resource teachers and instructional teachers. We're getting feedback from our administrators as well as our staff in all classrooms, in general education, in our resource, in our instructional programs. And this is going to help us have conversations when we get to staffing. There is a teaching shortage. One of those areas where we feel a lot of that pressure is here within this special education and student services department. This is not unique to District 200. It is not only local in our county, it's at the state level and at the federal level. We are working very collaboratively with our building leaders, human resources, all of our administrators to begin the hiring process early for hard-to-fill positions. One just off the top of my head are our school psychologists. We're continuously recruiting our teaching assistants and I am very excited about our Grow Our Own program with internships. I know that I'm a product of a Grow Your Own program. I fell in love with special education while I was a high school student, so I'm hoping we recruit more educators into this amazing field. We're taking special considerations for staffing needs, particularly our instructional programs. We're working closely with our elementary administrators to analyze staffing supports for both resource and tier-three as well. That is a really broadband overview of a very complex system, so I'm happy to answer any questions if I have it.
I have a question on the chart, the first chart you showed with the different instructional classrooms.
Yes.
So as students are placed into one of those programs, does that mean like if they're in skills, are they in the skills classroom all day? And so then what are their opportunities?
Yeah, that is an individual conversation. So when an individualized education plan team meets, we talk about every subject area. So at the elementary level, we'll talk about when a student is in the reading block. Is it better for them to be supported in the skills classroom or in the general education classroom? We do that for math, writing, PE, all of the electives. Every student in that classroom looks differently. We have some students who have a lot of passion and interest and strengths in math, so they might go up to general education for math, but there are other content areas they need to be within the skills program. I would say generally, in those core content areas, especially when you get into our programs that are providing modified curriculum, we tend to see them in their instructional program for the areas of reading, math, science, social studies. And so a lot of their opportunities are in their electives, lunch, recess, morning arrival.
But some students can be in skills for some classes and gen-ed for others, even the instructional classes.
And that goes for all of the instructional classrooms, essentials, PISA, SAIL.
Does that develop as part of their IEP?
That is correct.
And is there support for them in the general education classroom? Like, does an aide come with them?
Yeah, typically, yes. Again, that's a discussion that we have. So when we talk about that a student is going to be in a class, the individualized education team will talk about, is based upon the student's needs, do they need a teaching assistant to go with them? Or are they ready to go with the natural supports in general ed? On average, most students typically need a teaching assistant. And then one of those two to three teaching assistants that I talked about with you, they will float with that student for that period to the general education class.
Can you talk about how the parents are involved in the process and the touchpoints along the way?
Yep. So there's a couple of different ways. The, it starts very much at the beginning. So anytime we make a plan for a student, even at the start of the evaluation, parents are a part of that process and they must give us approval to even do this testing. Every, after they're evaluated, in every year, we have an individualized education plan meeting. We are required by law to have a minimum of at least one, and parents are one of the required participants who needs to be in attendance. And this is where we talk a lot about what their services look like. At any point in time, a parent can request to have additional IEP meetings. So it is not uncommon that we start to see growth and success for students. Both our team or parents are thinking it might be time that their student is ready to try some other instructional opportunities, maybe in general ed. And a parent just needs to contact their case manager, can request an IEP meeting, and then we will have the same discussion based upon what are some of the adjustments that we need to make because of the growth of the student.
I just want to add one more thing into Erica's answer. On the second page of your slide deck, when Erica was comparing the gen-ed classroom and the instructional setting, one, the last row on there was about communication. And so like a gen-ed classroom teacher, they're probably communicating weekly with parents. That's kind of the norm. But then for our parents with students with disabilities, the communication is very, is much more frequent. It could even be occur daily.
Regarding IEP meetings, I'm curious, have we returned across the board to IEP meetings, the expectation being in person or are they still virtual?
I would say the expectation is they are in person. We have had families who, due to their schedule, especially if we have parents that are both working, a parent can still request to have a virtual meeting. So it's our assumption, we will make them in person, but if it works best for that parent to have a virtual, we will offer that as well.
Insofar as the state and our process give us discretion as we're in those discussions and looking at how intensive of services and which environment does a student go into, do we have an overarching, let's say, philosophy that kind of guides whether we tend towards more intensive services or less?
It is required that as an IEP team must first consider what is called the least restrictive environment. It is presumed that that is general education. If we're going to have a student serviced in any of our instructional classrooms, including direct, we must have student-based data that indicates that that is where they need to be serviced in order to make growth.
Thank you.
And so what came up at our coffee with the board? So in the instance where a parent may disagree with the placement and they're part of the IEP team, is a trial offered of what the parent would request?
At times, again, it always is on an individual basis. What I do encourage families to do is work with your case manager, speak to your building administrator, but also what I think is, it's not captured here, but each one of those programs, we have a designated special education director where this is really their area of expertise. At any point in time, if parents have, feel like they need to talk to somebody who maybe has a little bit more experience or they need some additional support, I do encourage them to reach out to one of our special education directors. By all means, typically, parents can find that out because their director is listed on the bottom of their conference summary report from their IEP. I have a child with a disability myself. I know I forget it, so if any parent doesn't know, they're welcome to call me. I will help them get in contact with the correct director.
Hey Erica, question, I would just shift gears mildly because I think question was raised and I think you're here to maybe address it or at least talk a little bit about it. Middle school, especially at Monroe, that targeted area for improvement as a part of the Monroe facilities plan, when we talk about special education inside of that plan, right, the areas that we're developing are not the resource level support, right? Those spaces are distributed throughout the building. We're really talking specifically about the specialized program. What is the advantage of those spaces being clustered versus distributed in the building?
Yeah, so for some of these programs, we cluster them because that actually gets increased services to students. So to continue with the Monroe example, Monroe is the whole middle school site for our essentials program. If you recall, one of the cornerstones of that program is, is that we provide daily living skills, functional academics, recreation and leisure. So currently at Monroe, we do have a kitchen that many of our students within that instructional program, because they, they access that space very frequently. We are teaching students how to utilize their developing reading skills to read recipes, to read menus. We're working on transferring their math skills to like everyday life skills. How do we increase a recipe? How do we read the fractions on a measuring cup? What is difficult about that space is, is the classroom, or that, that shared communal space is at the back of a classroom. So our students all have to walk through that classroom. And so many times that can be distracting. Also, that space, as well as different components of Monroe, are not as Americans with disabilities act compliant as it could be. So it is not uncommon to have students who have mobility concerns such as they're in a wheelchair. And so at this point, we are making adaptions. Thank you to our amazing physical therapist, but it's not like there's the oven that is wheelchair accessible. And we see that throughout the building.
And since bringing it up, so I absolutely understand and appreciate the idea of clustering. My issue with the plans had to do more with, like, it seemed to be clustered away instead of like centrally located, if that makes sense. I think the more we can encourage and facilitate having our special ed students truly be part of the community and be visible in those plans would be.
Yeah, we, that was something we talked in depth about when I met with those teachers within the program. And there's, there are five classrooms at Monroe and there, those five classrooms are interspersed throughout the building. So the feedback that we did hear from staff is it is helpful to have two classrooms right next door to each other because what is not uncommon is that some of those shared specialists to meet the specialized health needs of students. So for instance, we've got teachers A and B, this part of the building, just a little way down, there's teacher C, and then I've got teacher D and E that are over here. But we try and keep D and E within walking distance or eyesight of one another so that specialist, in case there's a medical crisis or we need a speech path. So we agree with you, we want to intersperse them.
I guess not even, I absolutely appreciate that. I think even for some basic hygiene needs, that you need that extra set of hands in what you have going on in the classroom. But have that cluster be more centrally located.
Okay.
Rather than, I mean, that's my suggestion. I, I know that getting the feedback from the actual staff is valuable.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I had a question, not related to that, so if anyone else. How many instructional classrooms are currently at Jefferson?
There are, I would need to go in and check. Our instructional classrooms do fluctuate. So I'm going to, I pulled K5, so I will need to touch base with Mary Davis.
I was just curious.
I have two questions. On this chart, do you have the data of how many students are being served by those 34 and 41 classrooms?
I do, I can pull that.
Just curious what that...
Yeah, it's an average of six to eight. So I can give you a ballpark, but I can pull that more than that.
And then secondly, on the first page of this chart, it talks about all levels out of district programming. Could you talk a little bit about what that means? How many students are in out of district programming and how those decisions are made?
Yeah, so it, it mirrors very similar to how we do all special education services. So at every annual review, the individualized education plan team meets and they decide, and we must have data every time we move down that continuum of services. And so our out of district programming is considered to be one of our most intensive specialized programs, and is also considered to be incredibly restricted. So at the annual review, a student's individualized education plan that's comprised of their teachers, all of their related service providers, as well as their parents, we look at the data. If the data indicates that a student is struggling to make progress, many times even within our instructional program, we do need to look at more specialized out of district schools, and then the IEP team will make that decision.
And thanks for this time.
You mentioned the continuum of services. Are we capable of at each facility within the district providing that continuum? Or are there capability gaps that force placement of students outside of their home school?
Yeah, unfortunately, there is not the capability. So for instance, our skills program at the elementary level is two classrooms. And so at, when you look at it across 14 elementary schools, there may only be one or two students at each home elementary school who have that unique learning profile of needs. So in order to give the intensive access to a board-certified behavior analyst and a special education teacher, that's where the clusters come in.
I'm going to point out too, on your document, the last page of the stapled document is the building locations for those programs, so...
But that's driven by, for lack of a better term, lack of critical mass. There aren't enough students at each school. It's not driven by labor market shortages or things like that.
Correct.
Okay. My other question, do we connect parents with any sort of resources, either in district, nonprofit, et cetera, to help them navigate the IEP process and if they need an advocate to assist them with that?
Yep, and there is, in fact, there's a state, there, it, all of this information is located on the Illinois State Board of Education program. I can also help families find those types of resources. All they have to do is call and ask. And then as well as, once a student becomes 13 and a half, new pages get added to the IEP. They're called a transition plan, and that's where we talk every year, are what are the outside agencies and what are the actions that we need to take to help a student be successful post-graduation?
Angela, let me step back to your question. There are five sections at Jefferson that are instructional out of 30.
On the out of district programming, can you just give me a rough sense of how many different out of district, not necessarily the students, but how many placements?
Yeah, we have approximately, and that number changes because we have IEPs all the time, but we have anywhere from about 115 to 125 students in out of district placements. There are hundreds of schools across the state of Illinois. So when we place a student, a private therapeutic day school needs to be approved to support their eligibility. So if a student has autism, they must go to a ISBE-approved school for students with autism, and we need to keep the, but, we need to keep the drive less than 50 minutes. We all try and keep it even under that. And so they're also held to the same rules. So I would say we have at least over 20 therapeutic day school partners. But we do try and have students attend the same school from another District 200 whenever we can. With a therapeutic day school, that school must also, they have an application process. So they review the student's IEP, and they have to feel that they're a good fit for those student services. So for instance, it's not uncommon, if a student has a very, needs a lot of social work support, if that school does not have the, enough social work support, or that's not part of their model, they will not accept the student. And then we will need to go find a therapeutic day school that can implement that student's IEP.
And then I had a question on the resources you could push in or pull out in the blended classrooms. So that's different from a student having an IEP, or is that, could that be part of it?
That is, so blended is a term that is used when we're talking about three to five-year-old programming. And it is very similar to our resource-level programming at elementary. Why in special ed we don't use the same name all the way through, I don't know. I can see how it's confusing. But our blended classrooms are, at the early child level, childhood level, they are similar to that resource-type methodology.
And then what, what is the standard when a student doesn't necessarily need to be in instructional classroom, when they, we see that?
So I want to make sure I understand the question. The question is, when does a resource student who might need reading or math support, when do they receive it? It is an individual decision. So we have some students in resource programming that based upon their needs, they're accessing the general education curriculum, and they just need some supports within the classroom. So then the special ed teacher pushes into that classroom, and they do it right during the ELA block. We have some students in resource that need highly specialized interventions, like a reading intervention, Wilson, SRA. We will then work with the building to try and give them that support outside of reading and math blocks, so that we're not removing them from their reading instruction and their math instruction, and we're giving them in essence additional reading instruction that, during that day.
I have a couple.
I was just going to ask, I'm glad to see the Grow Your Own aspect of this. Would you comment on how the students react, the, the teacher-student, how's that different from the other classrooms that they work in?
Well, it looks different because it looks different than in general education. But I could not speak more highly of our students here in District 200. They are such remarkable young individuals that really believe in inclusivity and supporting our students. One of my favorite memories was when our Special Olympics team went downstate, and everybody in Wheaton North came out, and they had the band and the parade. And so like all professions, we have students that are called to work in a science class and a math class, and I'm excited to say we have students that are called to work in our special ed classes as well.
Do they focus on that, or do they move around in the...
I actually want to add on to Erica's answer and highlight Wheaton North in particular, Lindsay Benedetti, who's the department chair at Wheaton North for special ed. She has set up a system where some of those Grow Your Own students are like a study hall, they're going in and helping in the instructional classrooms as well. So that's why we highlighted the Wheaton North internship. They are specifically going above and beyond and helping out in those classrooms during the day.
But then do they rotate through other types of classrooms, or they...
Our, the model that I'm aware of is our teachers are assigned with one or two teachers during their Intro to Teaching internship. So it could be one of our special education teachers, but they stick with that teacher throughout the internship.
So if you're interested in special education...
They may be paired with that person, right? But I did want to just give a shout out to Wheaton North because they've set up something extra special that I think is really beneficial for students to get a look at instructional programming specifically.
I will also say that idea of having peers go into our instructional classrooms, we see that at every level. So like even at Monroe, there are peer partners in their adaptive PE class. We see that at South as well. So again, we really know that our students thrive when they're with their peers in the building. So we try and create as many pathways as possible to have those experiences.
Another thing that you've emphasized is the interaction with the parents and the support, and I'm sure that not all parents are equally supportive. Do you have a way of dealing with situations where the parents may not be so involved and the kid needs a lot of support?
Yeah, parents are their children's greatest advocate. So I know that at times, you know, we might have, they may be requesting something that we're not yet doing. One of the benefits of special education is, is we do have those various processes with the IEP meetings. We always try and resolve any concerns and address what parents are requesting. But if at any point in time, parents are asking for additional assistance, we do have advocates. There's also state facilitated IEP meetings. There's also conflict, there's also processes for conflict resolution. And parents can call me at any point in time, and I can help them.
I guess I'm thinking more of the parents that are less involved than you would like for them to be. Do, are you still able to serve the student?
Yeah, so, and for those families, we try and understand, see if we can wrap them with different community agencies or supports and outside resources. We have a lot of great partners here in DuPage County.
Good, good. Very pleased to see what you're doing there. Thank you.
John, it's reminding me of, one difficulty that I see is the multilingual parent, like accessing that teacher connection even, and, and that school connection. I, I think that's even exacerbated at the special ed level, so it's difficult.
Yeah, we're actually, within special ed, we are required to provide interpreters at every IEP meeting, and we're also required to translate IEPs. So if a stu, if a family has a, has a primary language outside of English, we will translate their IEP so they can read it in their native language.
Thank you. John, I just wanted to tell you, so one of my children was a peer mentor at Monroe, and I think one of the nice things about that program is that now that he's in high school, he sees those students, and they have that connection. And so they're truly part of the community, which brings up, I will say, probably one of the complaints that I hear, or, or feedback that I hear is because some of these specialized elementary programs are only housed in certain buildings, there's not always, like, if the building changes the next year, like, so they're not with their home school, but then they also like get used to like a certain elementary school, and then it gets switched for the next year, and then maybe leading to a different high school. So sometimes they feel like they're not part of anyone's place, which I know is difficult to...
Yeah, we want our students and our families to feel like they're part of that school, and as they've developed those relationships, they can keep going. Thank you.
Angela, I can tell you that while that does happen, because again, at any given point in time, there, there also sits this reality that I know Erica's really tuned into that there are very heavy regulations. So there is a practical reality that you move beyond a number, you must open a classroom, and that can't always happen inside of the building. But one of the things that I know Erica and working with Chris and the team have been cognizant of is trying to build a consistent path within a program, so that if a student is in a program and likely to be in that program across the elementary spectrum, they can at least stay inside of that building. Truly from even 2014, when I started here, I would tell you, programs were far more disjointed at that time, where a student might have been here for the primary version of the program, here for the, the second, you know, not the, the intermediate version. And now at least the trajectories are much more consistent whenever possible to give a student that, as few transitions out of building as possible. So they've worked hard on that, and, and, you know, certainly Chris has worked hard with buildings to help them prepare for when we need them to make an adjustment to accommodate that for the purpose of the program versus perhaps some other need inside of the building, so.
Back in October, we reviewed the Illinois School Report Cards and the District Dashboard, and for almost every area we looked at, there was 2022 to 2023 growth among IEP students. I'm just curious, would you attribute that to any specific change we made in our programming? Was it a demographic shift, or was it just normal variation?
I would, I would need to dive into that a little bit more to be able to give you a firm answer. As you can see here, there's a lot of different types of students, and they're accessing all different types of programs, but I can dive into that if you're wanting to have some of that information.
Unless other board members are interested. I know you've got a lot on your plate, and I don't want to add it. I just didn't know if there was kind of a, you know, oh wow, this is what drove it type of reaction. It sounds like it would take a little bit more digging.
Any other questions, board members? Well, first of all, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell, this is a little emotional, but I'll tell you, someone asked you, why do you want to be a board member? Tonight's presentation is why I want to be a board member. It was really good. Thank you. All right, enough of that. No comments, right? All right, so there being no further action to come before the board an open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So motioned.
Second. Motion by Mr. Jerpy, second by Mr. Ratch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.